So we're ready. Hello, I'm Maria Norton, the VP of Advocacy and Legislation for Miami-Dade County Council, PTA, PTSA. Welcome to Miami-Dade County Council's PTA's School Board Candidate Runoff Webinar. We appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedules to meet the candidates from District 3, 5, and 9 that are seeking your vote in the upcoming general election. Before we begin, I would like to introduce Sandra West, our President of the Miami-Dade County Council PTA, who will also serve as our timekeeper tonight. I want to share that Miami-Dade County Council PTA, or any other local PTA at any level, does not endorse any candidate or political party. It is not permitted by the IRS regulations. With that in mind, be mindful that the views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates, not of Miami-Dade County Council PTA. Conducting tonight's webinar is our Legislation Commission, Eileen Segal, our Advocacy Chair and past MDCC President and former Florida State PTA President. Mindy Goo, our Legislation Chair, also a past President of Miami-Dade County Council and former Legislation Chair for Florida PTA. And Diane Quick, our Municipalities Chair. I will now turn the webinar over to our team to begin. Mindy?
Thank you, Maria. I will be going over the rules of the webinar. Each candidate will be given one minute to answer each question. You will be notified when your time has expired. Each candidate will be asked the same questions, although we will be alternating the order in which they are asked. Due to time constraints, we apologize, but rebuttal will not be committed. Diane?
As we approach the end of the webinar, each candidate will be given one minute and 30 seconds to provide a closing statement. We had many questions submitted to us from our members. We hope to answer or ask as many as possible. Eileen?
Each candidate will be given one minute and 30 seconds for an opening statement to give our viewers a little background information about themselves. Once we have heard from all candidates, I will begin with our questions. For opening statements, we're going to start with District 3's candidate Lucia Baez-Geller for your opening statement.
Thank you, everybody, for having me. Thank you, PTA, PTSA, for having us here to answer questions. I want everyone to know that my door will always be open if you have any further questions after today. I'm Lucia Baez-Geller, candidate for School Board, District 3. I'm running because I believe every student should have the opportunity to succeed. I developed this value in education from my mother, who worked hard, and from my countless teachers who believed in me and taught me how to strive for excellence. And for the past 15 years, I've been able to instill in my students the same striving for excellence in education as a proud teacher at Miami Beach Senior High. And in these 15 years teaching, I've learned the importance of school board policy, the huge impacts that they make. I've seen what works, what doesn't work, and that's why I will be working hard for, first of all, a safe transition back to school, for safety and mental health resources, for accountability and transparency in our spending and operations, for a world-class education and equitable funding. And I want to bring my firsthand experience to the school board, and I will ensure that I will be speaking up for all these issues and ensure that all of our voices are heard.
Thank you. Candidate Russ Rywell, opening statement.
Thank you. Hold on one second, and let me set the timer so I can be respectful of your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Russ Rywell. I grew up down here. I'm a product of the public school system of Miami-Dade County. I went away to some pretty good colleges and managed to get a good education based on what I learned in the school system. I went to Singapore ultimately and worked in finance and ran a multimillion-dollar business. And then 20 years ago, I decided to move back to Florida, raise my family as I was, and to give back to the community. And what I did was I decided to teach. And I taught the skills that mattered most to me, to my students. And that's what the World Economic Forum says as well: complex problem solving, critical thinking, and creativity. And that's what I did. I taught speech and debate, and I've coached many successful students, and I teach mathematics and economics to teach critical thinking and the skills they need to succeed. I know what the students need to succeed, but I also know that we're going into a very severe crisis. We're in a health crisis, and pretty soon, we're going to have a budget crisis. And as the opening of school shows, we need people on the board that understand the financial side and the business side, but have the interest of the students at heart. People that have dedicated their lives and have the classroom experience to also see what works and what doesn't. And I humbly ask for your support to do that on the school board for all 350,000 students.
Thank you. District 5, candidate Mara Sabata.
Hi, thank you so much for hosting this and having us on. I was really looking forward to this. So I will just share a little bit about myself. I grew up here in Miami, Florida. I'm a product of Miami-Dade County Public Schools with two children. I graduated from Miami-Dade County Public Schools. So yeah, I have that experience from that perspective. I began my career teaching like 30 years ago and did... I was... It was... It's the most meaningful work I've ever done, honestly. Like, people think, you know, just a teacher. There is no such thing. Teachers can change the world, and I'm extremely passionate about the field of teaching. I've gone on, after teaching, to do district work, consulting in mathematics and science. I have a doctorate from Florida State in Science Education and have done a whole series of things in the district. Everything from directing federally funded district-wide initiatives like on character and values when we had that funding, which was very, very good. And then also, I left Miami-Dade County Public Schools for about seven years and worked at Miami-Dade College as college-wide Chair of K-12 Teacher Preparation Programs, which was then... I had... I got to share all of my wonderful experiences and prepare teachers in a field where there are no limits. It's so rewarding to have the kind of impact that I have had. And when this seat came open for me, it was a no-brainer. It was like, I've done this my whole life, you know, to have the opportunity to serve in the school board.
Your time is up.
Okay, I said enough.
Thank you. District 5, candidate Kristi Fraga.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for hosting this, and thank you for everyone who is joining us as the attendee to watch and be so interested in what is happening in our school system in Miami-Dade County and throughout these elections. My name is Kristi Fraga. I'm running for school board because I believe that our parents need a voice on the school board. I think that it's extremely important to have parent involvement. I've been very blessed to come from a community where, as a community leader and as the Vice Mayor in the City of Doral, been very active in our schools and created a real community around our schools and the PTAs in our schools. One of my biggest initiatives was creating an expo for parents to come every year, and we call it the "Back to School for Parents" and "Parent Volunteers." And we bring educators from the community to come together and be able to hear experts talk about things that are so important for our families and providing resources for our families. I want to bring this same initiative to our school board and work with organizations such as yours and work with our students to really reach their full potential. I think that we have a wonderful ability within our school system. We have great teachers and administrators, and I look forward to being able to enhance that. I have extensive experience in the private sector as well as in the public sector, as I've served for seven years. My background is in finance and accounting. I received my education from FIU. I was born and raised in our district, and I know that I have the experience, the drive, the passion, and a small, school-aged child to live through the experiences and live with the consequences of the decisions I make on the school board on a daily basis. So I look forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. District 9, candidate Dennis Moss.
Thank you very much, and thank you for this opportunity to address the PTA, PTSA. The county's final budget hearing is being held as we speak, but it was important for me to be here. I'm County Commissioner Dennis C. Moss, a 27-year veteran of the county commission. I'm a proud graduate of Miami-Dade, the Miami-Dade Public School System, and I have three children that graduated from public schools as well. As an experienced elected official, I helped rebuild South Dade after Hurricane Andrew, and I've delivered on many major projects to the South Dade community. During these challenging times, experience and leadership is important, and I have those qualities. And not just as an elected official. Prior to retiring in 2018, I worked for 40 years at a nonprofit in South Dade, 36 years as its Executive Director. In 1986, when I recognized that students from challenged neighborhoods were being disproportionately expelled from the public school system, I created an alternative education school program to serve them and steer them away from the school-to-prison pipeline. As a result, I have experienced hiring administrators, making sure that teachers, custodians, security personnel, and support staff were hired, making sure the curriculums were implemented, that students had breakfast and lunch that was supplied by RR Moten, that school board bus transportation was provided, and the experience of dealing with FTE, FCAT, and other school administration issues. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Candidate Luisa Santos, District 9.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. It is a pleasure to spend this time with you all. And I want to just start by saying, my first experience, my first trip to Tallahassee, was actually thanks to the PTA, PTSA as a student, where Eileen and Mindy, I got to travel with you. You may not remember me, but I remember you. I came to the U.S. when I was eight years old from Columbia, and my mom made that decision to come here because she knew the value of a public education in Miami-Dade. She came here for the opportunities that would be available to my sister and to me. And I enrolled at Perrine Elementary, Southwood Middle, Corey Senior High, and excelled because of the teachers and counselors that poured into me. With a deep desire to serve, I tried to start a mentoring program in our middle schools. And when I went to apply for that program, I learned that I was an undocumented student because I asked my mother for my social security number, and she said I didn't have one. Well, that didn't stop me. I started my higher education at Miami-Dade College, and then I transferred to Georgetown University, where, while getting my degree in political economy and education, I was able to serve in President Obama's Department of Education. I was placed as an Assistant Fourth Grade Teacher in a very well-resourced classroom and school, but also ran a Third Grade Literacy Program at a very poorly resourced school and classroom. I came back home six years ago to launch my business, where from day one, I have sought to...
Your time is up.
Okay, I'll get to the rest through the questions.
Thank you. Thank you all for your opening statements. At this time, we're going to begin our questions. I will state the questions, the question, and call on a candidate. Thank you. Here it is. The reopening of Miami-Dade public schools appears to be imminent. Given all you have heard... Excuse me. Given all you have learned these last few weeks, would you send a child in your family back into the classroom? We're going to start with candidate Geller, please.
Thank you. It's really important. As a teacher, I can tell you that this is absolutely on my mind. And what I would say is, unless we can be sure and secure that every life will be safe and preserved, that we cannot be rushing into going back. I know with everything that happens with online learning, that people feel strongly that education is a priority and they want the best for their students. But until we have the protocols in place guided by science, best practices for hand sanitizing, sanitizing our classrooms for transportation, how is that going to happen? And until we know how we can hold our people in charge accountable so that every life is protected, we must delay.
Thank you. Candidate Rywell, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. The reopening of Miami-Dade public schools appears to be imminent. Given all you have learned these last few weeks, would you send a child in your family back into the classroom?
Reset the timer. Well, the first thing I would point out is that we want to have choice, right? And that's why we've surveyed the parents. And so the parents that feel comfortable doing it can do it, and the parents that don't feel comfortable don't have to do it. So I think we're on the right track there, and I would never presumptively tell a parent you should or you shouldn't do it. Now, the question is to me personally, and it's important because I'm a parent. I feel that if I could avoid doing it for a period of time, I would. If I was in a situation where I couldn't do it, I would at least feel comfortable with the fact, listening to the health meeting of experts today, that all eight metrics have been met, that an audit will be done of the classrooms by September 25th to make sure all the schools are in compliance. And if I had to, I would.
Thank you. Candidate Sabata, do you need me to read the question again?
Yes, please.
Okay. The reopening of Miami-Dade public schools appears to be imminent. Given all you have learned these last few weeks, would you send a child in your family back into the classroom?
So that decision about sending a child in my family back into the classroom, given what I have learned, is... Depends on what the current situation is on the day the school's open and what the assurances that are provided to parents. And in this case, the question says "myself," I would want to make sure that whatever was stated in the LOU that has been signed and put together between Miami-Dade County Public Schools and others is in place in terms of the safety protocol. Safety is the big issue here, among other, other things. I just think that this situation for parents who have no choice is a very, very difficult one to make, but safety is priority.
Thank you. Candidate Fraga, do you need me to read the question again?
No, no, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that having choice is extremely important for our families. There are multi-generational families throughout our district, and there are families that, unfortunately, some parents work two jobs and they have to go back to work. And we have families that have a single-parent household, and those families also are put in very difficult situations. I'm sorry, can everybody mute if you're... Sorry. So I think it's a very difficult situation for that family who doesn't have the childcare to be able to find the resources and have their child get the best care, the best education possible. And that becomes very difficult when we are asking parents to make a decision between their job and putting food on the table and sending their children back to school. We have excellent resources, and I think that there's opportunities where families that feel comfortable sending their kids back to school can and should do so and should have that ability to do so. And everything needs to be done with the right safety measures in place. We need to be providing protective gear for these students that don't have it, for teachers that need it. And we've seen the failed system of the virtual technology.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Candidate Moss, do you need me to read the question again?
No, that won't be necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just say, you know, that in light of what happened with K-12, I would approach this with a lot of skepticism. Again, you know, it's important to get our children back into the classroom, but we should only do that when it is safe and that we have the proper safety protocols in place. We need to make sure that we've got enough custodial support because a lot of sanitizing is going to happen more than normal. Need to make sure that we have social distancing, whether that be Plexiglas or whatever else needs to basically happen. And again, I would want to make sure, not based upon, you know, the comments of, you know, staff, I would want to make sure as a policymaker, you know, that those things that need to be in place in order to take care of our children and our staff and to make sure that they're safe, that those things are in place. Because, again, we took the word as it relates to the virtual platform, and that was a fiasco and a problem. I think that the board needs to be more engaged and more involved and make sure...
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Candidate Santos, do you need the question read?
No, thank you.
Okay.
For me, the number-one priority is the health and safety of our students, families, and staff. A lot of the questions I still had remaining were answered in today's meeting of the medical experts and public health officials. Things that I saw that were encouraging included the update on the HVAC systems and the MERV-13 filters, which I double-checked with school staff and indeed has taken place. I was happy to see the development and accurate spread of the face shields and PPE that people are requesting from schools. My questions that still remain are around the discretionary funding we are giving to our principals to actually be able to get their schoolhouses ready to safely return. And that is what remains for me, to be able to say yes or no definitively. It is safe or as safe as possible to give that choice to parents and families.
Thank you all. Now, turn it over to Mindy Goo.
Thank you, Eileen. For the next question, does your concept of school choice include the spending of tax dollars on private school options? And we'll begin with candidate Fraga.
Thank you. So I think, again, that it's increasingly important to have the options for choice for families. If a family has a child with a special need or a particular talent, and a school offers that, and they can go to that school with a voucher program, I have no one to stand in their way to allow them to be able to have that choice for their family. So I think school choice is extremely important for families and for children who have special needs. I recently dealt with this with a family who has a 30... Had a child with a special need, and they needed to get into a specific program. They needed to do it with a voucher program. This child was able to get into the program and is excelling incredibly and is a totally different child, and it is the best thing for that child and that family. And I think that it's extremely important that we have these options within our county for these students and families.
Thank you. Candidate Zapata, would you like me to repeat the question? There you go.
Okay. So choice is something that I think is critically important. Having said that, when you talk about public funding, and understandably, there's... The laws in place that says that this is, you know, allowable in terms of public funding for public-private partnerships. And as long as that public-private partnership is supporting families who have needs and who have desires for their child to go to another school, I have absolutely no issue. The only issue I would have there would be that a school of choice using public funding combined with private would not support the child unconditionally. It's... They have a choice to return that child back, and that, to me, is problematic.
Thank you. We'll move on to candidate Santos. Do you need the question repeated?
No, that's all right. Thank you. For me, the reason I am running for school board is to ensure that we are pouring into and supporting every single public school to meet the needs of every family. And so for me, I believe that our public school system, that idea of the common school that Horstman came up with in Boston is the foundation of our democracy. I believe in that, and I believe that everything I get to do through this board is in support of those public schools and making sure they are excellent in every corner and meet the needs of every family and child.
Thank you. Candidate Moss.
Thank you for the question, and I'm not going to beat around the bush. The bottom line is that, you know, I've got a real concern about charter's private schools as well as church schools, siphoning money off from the traditional public school system and then placing those schools at peril whereby they either face being repurposed because they've lost enrollment, or, you know, they wind up being the subject of closure. Again, we can find a balance whereby we can allow for choice when a choice occurs. You know, we've got to also make sure that we take care of our traditional schools. That's the reason why one of my issues in my platform is to preserve traditional schools in challenged neighborhoods, because I see a problem happening in the district. I see that the charters that are coming in and siphoning off students from those particular schools, and those are the schools that are now in peril and potentially could face closure in the future. And, you know, schools are the heartbeat of these neighborhoods, and I want to make sure that they're preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Moss. We'll move on to candidate Rywell.
Just bringing up my timer. Okay, thank you. Look, there are special-needs children, and I understand that sometimes they have to go out of the system. But what the legislature has done this past year is expanded scholarships for people to go out of the system with up to $77,000 in income for a family of four. And that comes straight out of the Florida Public Education Budget for a private school. And while I'm sympathetic to parents that desire private or religious education, we're dealing with a publicly-funded system that's starved in budget. And I'm running for the Miami-Dade School Board, so I can't in good conscience support the removing of millions from a public school system that I'm running to be entrusted to. Now, my opponent has gotten the endorsement of the Miami Teachers of Dade, which strongly opposes this expansion, and the Florida Federation of Children, which has worked hard to pass it. I don't know what she told each other of the organizations, but I think we have a right to know what her true position is on voucher expansion.
Thank you, candidate Rywell. We'll move on to candidate Baez-Geller, please.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Does your concept of school choice include the spending of tax dollars on private school options?
So for me, school choice, it's a reality. It arose out of a need that was demonstrated in our community and by parents who really felt that their needs weren't being met in a traditional public school. And as a school board member, I will be and must be aware of the places where we have not addressed gaps in our traditional public school system and where we could provide better opportunities for our students. I've dedicated my life to traditional public schools, and as a school board member, my job is to ensure that everybody in the community and the district has a world-class... Has access to a world-class education. We need to hold all of our schools accountable. We need to make sure that tax-fair dollars are protected. We need to make sure that students attending all of our schools have the resources that they need. And I believe that our legislation should not be pitting traditional schools against private schools in terms of funding school choices here, and we need to review our practices to make sure that all of our schools are a benefit to the community.
Thank you very much. Diane, we'll move on to the next question.
Yes, so our next question is, if you could change one thing about the way we educate children, what would it be? And we'll begin with candidate Moss. You're on mute, candidate Moss.
If I could change one thing in our system, I think it would be to try to get the community more involved, if you will, with the school system and the school system allowing the community to be more involved. In the past, there were times when there was that connection between the schools and the community, whether it be the churches, whether it be the nonprofits and other organizations who were there to support students, particularly students in challenged neighborhoods. That seems to have broken down to some sense, and I'd like to see that brought back because, again, it takes a village to raise a child, and we need to make sure that we have everybody in the community involved in the education of our children. So that would be the one thing, you know, we need to make sure that we can begin to bridge that gap and get our churches and nonprofits and other groups back into some of these schools to help these students and help the system.
Thank you. As we move on to the next question. Thank you. As we move forward, if anyone needs me to repeat the question, please let me know. Candidate Santos?
Thank you. One of the most important things which I've been talking about and have heard time and time again from parents, teachers, students, administrators, is the need for more robust social emotional integrated learning into our curriculum so that we are graduating students who are fully ready to thrive and we navigate this complex world we live in, right? So it's not just enough to focus on math and science and reading and writing because those are extremely important skills, but also how we pour into developing whole humans, how we pour into students who can self-regulate emotions, who can navigate complex situations. And that goes hand in hand with pouring into your emotional health of our students and the mental well-being of our students. So as you know, decreasing the counselor, the students at counselor ratio is a huge priority of mine, which goes hand in hand into pouring into that social emotional learning. Ensuring that we have a holistic view of how we educate children to thrive as young adults once they graduate is important to change.
Thank you. Candidate Baez Geller?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. If you could change one thing about the way we educate children, what would it be?
Just one thing? Well, what we see now and what we've learned, one of the many lessons from COVID is that we can really stand to have a lot of academic innovation. We see a lot of students that did thrive through the online learning system. So we want to make sure that we have options in that. And then also that within that academic innovation, we have equity in representation, that all students have access to advanced academics and higher learning and college and career readiness. But also we want to make sure in academics that our students are having authentic learning experiences where they're building real workforce development skills and where they're able to apply what they learn in real world and critical thinking settings. And yes, through public-private partnerships, this can also be achieved.
Thank you. Candidate Rywell?
Thank you. This is a great question. I think where we're failing in our system is that we're stressing the wrong things. We are becoming more and more involved with high-stakes testing and less involved with the skills the kids need. And that involves teaching critical thinking, which is where my expertise is. We need to have electives. We need to teach creativity. We need to have art and music and debate. And these are the things that are going by the wayside now to be to be taken up by standardized testing, where I have to give 10 standardized tests a year in geometry. We're going in the wrong direction and we have to change the direction, but we have to change it for all students. We have to give students access, all students, to AP and gifted programs. We have to tell students that we have high expectations and they can do it. We have to get the resources to the schools that need it and we have to educate our students for success. And I'm just the person to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Zapata?
Love that question. Okay, I'm unmuted. So yes, I think that's a great question. And it's very simple. The one major thing I would do was would be to really try and have our schools get away from ranking our students by that one test score. And, you know, it really promotes a lot of memorizing and it stresses students out and it makes them feel like they're not as accomplished as they can be. If we change education and what happens in the classroom and allow teachers the autonomy to teach in ways that promote thinking, that allows students to ask questions, that relate what's happening in the classroom to their world and their interests. And in that way, students are going to feel successful in school, are going to, you know, they're going to make sense of the fact that I'm in school because I'm doing something that, you know, piques my interest. We are, we are educating children to reason and to be in society and those skills are really not being emphasized, so.
Thank you. And candidate Fraga?
Thank you. For me, it would definitely be the excessive amount of testing and reducing the amount of testing that is taking place in our, in our different grade levels, which does allow for a lot of anxiety and stress to be put on the children as well as the families. And I think that we create more life skills and well-rounded course curriculum, things such as work experience into these, into these courses. It will really enhance the way our students are leaving, leaving prepared for college. And I think that also it will allow for a well-rounded child as well as help with some of the issues that we've been talking about here just a few minutes ago, which is for me, the emotional intelligence sector, which is so important for our students as they graduate and go on into the real world. So I think for me, it would definitely be changing the way that we standardize test our students.
Thank you. Eileen, next question?
Florida is consistently one of the lowest-ranked states for per-pupil funding. How will you advocate for additional funds for Miami Dade County Public Schools? Candidate Rywell?
Put my timer on? All right, this is a very important question because here's where you need the expertise for how a budget works and how the school system works. The way we get our money used to be a majority from the state and a minority from locally. It's been flipped on us the last 10 years. And one of the ways they do this is with the per-student, the FTE allocation. That's it used to be adjusted and it still is by a district cost differential, which is supposed to compensate us for the fact that our median house costs three times as much as it does in Dixie County. But guess what? They, they sort of credit us an extra 8%. So we have to start by going to Tallahassee and saying fair is fair. This is what we need to do and we need to squeeze everything out of our 300-page budget and I'm ready to do that. So thank you.
Candidate Baez Geller?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Absolutely. Florida is consistently one of the lowest-ranked states for per-pupil funding. How will you advocate for additional funds for Miami Dade County Public Schools?
Absolutely. So funding right now, especially with COVID, we do expect that there is going to be a shortfall in the next academic school year. So I will be actively engaging with our state and federal officials to ensure that they fulfill the promises they've made so that we have access to the resources that we need. We need transparency in our budget. We need to make sure that there are benefits to all of our communities and that we're also including accountability in our budget and checking our funding formulas and that if in fact we do need to make some cuts, that none of the cuts affect our safety, our mental health resources, our education resources that are so desperately needed in this time.
Thank you. Candidate Fraga?
Thank you. So I agree. I think that we absolutely need to be working with our legislators to be able to increase the amount we're getting per student in our district. We need to be stronger. We need to go up and speak in Tallahassee with our legislators to make sure that we're being accounted for the right way within our community and within our districts. So for me, it's extremely important to be able to have those relationships within, at in Tallahassee and in Washington, to make sure that any funding that we can get from our legislator as well as federally is extremely important. As well as looking here in our budget and seeing where are the top-heavy administrative funds going and how can we allocate it in a better way to make sure that resources aren't being cut directly from our schools. So that is something that I have an expertise in through my accounting background, my finance background. So I look forward to being able to dive into the budget and look at the spending that's taking place in certain areas that can be reallocated to our to our schools. Thank you.
Candidate Zapata?
So as far as as the budget and the allocation of funding for our public schools, it's always been somewhat, it's not equitable, but besides that, and that's a concern of mine, the lack of equity in terms of how our schools are funded. And it, and definitely speaking in Tallahassee with our legislators and presenting, but presenting in a way that shows data to support what we are doing in our schools, how much that costs, the impact it's having on students. Because you have to really show in black and white, you know, this is why those funds are needed and this is what is not happening. So sometimes you can ask for all that you want, but you have to really have it based on facts of what our students are coming away with, what the needs of those communities are and really the lack of equity among some of our neighborhoods, which to me is is something I may be very vigilant on.
Candidate Santos?
Thank you. As has been mentioned, I think one of the most important things we do to properly fund our public education is to take our role as advocates and go and build a strong legislative platform alongside our district and then go ourselves and develop those relationships with our state representatives and senators to ensure we're getting proper funding. We have to remember that budgets are moral statements. And currently, our budgets are reflecting the morals of the politicians who are controlling them. We have no problem spending $45,000 a year to gale a juvenile, yet we barely spend more than $7,000 per public school student. That is not okay. And as has been mentioned, one of the most important things we need to focus on in order to reverse this trend is to work to get that district cost differential action items from the study that was finally delivered two years too late. We finally have it and now it's about taking the action steps to ensure that we get our fair share in Miami Dade County.
Candidate Moss?
Thank you for the question. And again, cost differential is extremely important. Working with our legislators is extremely important. But I think we also need to make sure that we do a better job of educating the community to the fact that we're not getting our fair share in Tallahassee and in engaging them, you know, to help put pressure on our leadership here in Miami Dade County to make sure that they bring home the resources that we need in our community. And sometimes that means changing the chairs that people are sitting in in Tallahassee. But at the end of the day, you know, we've got to do a better job of bringing resources to our community and making sure that our children get the best education that we can possibly provide for them.
Thank you. Mindy?
Thank you, Eileen. The next question. Do you believe there should be equal accountability across the board for all schools receiving state funding? Please be specific. And we'll begin with candidate Zapata.
Absolutely, I do believe that. And specifically, I think that the way that 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 funding comes in to schools and what schools do with it in terms of after they've collected FTE, for example, especially schools who who are collecting public funding and have the combination of public-private, there should not be an allowance for those schools to turn students back after they've collected that funding. If that funding is there, the student needs to be served. Public education is supposed to serve all children, not just some that we decide are going to make our school look very good and with with scores. It needs to be for all children and serve all families if you're going to use public funding.
Thank you very much. If anyone would like the question repeated, please let me know. We'll move on to candidate Fraga.
Thank you. Absolutely. Transparency is is very important to our community. I think that it's, it should be given at all costs to our community. And I think there's better platforms that can be used, not only through the charter schools that receive funding, but also through our own private, public schools that receive funding. You know, we need to have better transparency modules for our community. Right now, I don't think we have that. Our, our system is very dense and difficult to navigate. The platforms we have are very difficult to understand. It's very difficult to find information for the community. So transparency is absolutely important, not only in the public school system, but also in the, in the charter schools that receive funding. And there should be absolutely no exceptions to that because they're charter schools. They should absolutely be able to open their books and provide all the information necessary for the voucher programs they're receiving, if they're receiving them, or for the public-private schools and also the funds that are being taken by charter schools to, to assist the kids in our community. So yes, absolutely transparency.
Thank you very much. Candidate Moss?
Thank you for the question. One of the things that is, you know, kind of rolling out in the community is the whole notion that, you know, charter schools in particular get treated differently than traditional public schools. And I believe that each school should basically be treated the same when it comes down to testing, when it comes down to the qualification of the teachers, when it comes down to reporting and transparency. But all of those things should be done in the same manner that they're done in the, in the traditional public schools. So again, I believe that all schools should be treated equally.
Thank you. Candidate Santos?
Thank you. Absolutely. We need transparency and accountability across the board when it comes to curriculum, to admission criteria, to expulsion, because we know there's unfair expulsion practices, to sources of use for capital and operational funds. And at the end of the day, public dollars means public rules and we need a fair playing field for all of our schools.
Thank you so much. Candidate Baez Geller?
Do you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. Do you believe there should be equal accountability across the board for all schools receiving state funding? And please be specific.
Absolutely. We need to ensure that there's fair and equitable accountability across the board. We also want to make sure that our schools are, have enough resources across the board for all of our students. There's some cities that have strong PTAs, strong cities, strong compacts, and they're just doing more and they're able to perform better in many ways in terms of safety, mental health resources. So while other schools are neglected and we need to bring all of our schools up to speed so that they can have strong facilities, strong academic programs, because not all of our schools are the same. And from an early age, we want to provide all of our students opportunities.
Thank you so much. We'll move on. Candidate Rywell?
Starting timer now. Thank you. I'm reminded of the Spider-Man quote, "With great power comes great responsibility." I know it's weird to quote a Marvel movie. But I think, look, everybody says that everyone should have accountability, but the devil is always in the details. So I would use my financial background, my ability to run a business, to manage a budget, to really hold accountable. What are the metrics that we're looking at for transparency? Are their teacher, are the teacher certifications the same? If it's the case of a charter versus a public school, who owns the land? What are the lease terms? Is it a municipality? Is it a public? Is it a private company? Is that school going to be maintained there in perpetuality? What about students with special needs? Are their needs being addressed? Are they being excluded because of the additional cost? And on the private school side where state money is going, certainly we have to look at if the LGBTQ community is is being treated properly. And I've got the background to make sure that transparency occurred.
Rywell, your time is up.
Thank you so much. We'll move on. Diane?
So our next question is, what specific steps will you take to expand our district's high-quality early education programs? And we'll begin with candidate Santos.
Thank you. Well, the research is clear here that for every dollar we invest in early ed, we get at least a $7 return in savings and outcomes for our students, right? We know that early ed is extremely important to the success of our students. So in District Nine, unfortunately, we have one of the lowest kindergarten readiness rates when you look across the district at 53%. When you look at our MDCPS-run programs, we have some of the highest kindergarten readiness rates. So for me, it is about working through, as we know, there are many different providers through which early learning is, is provided. And for me, it's about ensuring that as a district, we continue to expand our high-quality programs because I know the impact and necessity that exists there.
Thank you. Candidate Moss?
Well, you know, my teacher, my sister is a Well, you know, my sister is a a teacher's aide at Beckford Elementary. And again, that's where they have the pre-K and, you know, programs and those kinds of things. And it's very important, you know, that we have as many of the young people, many of the students involved in those programs as the earlier that they are immersed into our educational system, the better outcomes that we would see with them going forward. I've got a concern in the future as it relates to the COVID virus. You know, there's some conversation and talk out there now that what they're looking to do is to basically separate the teachers and the aides and separate the classes. That way, when the teachers are supposed to be in the same classroom with the aides, again, that's something that we need to take a look at as we deal with this this COVID virus issue.
Thank you. Candidate Bayaz Geller.
Do you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What specific steps will you take to expand our district's high-quality early education programs?
Thank you. So we all know that from an early age really determines the academic future of our students. And what we want to make sure is that regardless of background, regardless of where they live, that all parents have access to these early education resources. Because, for example, where I teach, when students want to enter into AP honors classes, they're already in a disadvantage because students in kindergarten were tested as gifted, and there's no more space. They're taking up all the space. So we want to make sure everyone has access to resources. In the beginning, VPK, we want to increase funding. We want to ensure quality programming in VPK. We also don't want to limit our resources just to academics. We want to make sure that there's family engagement, that parents know about opportunities from the beginning. And we also want to make sure that everybody is kindergarten-ready and has access to all of the resources that they may need.
Thank you. Candidate Rywell.
This is a very important question, and the reason is because the benefits of VPK or voluntary pre-K are well-established in research. It lowers behavioral problems. It increases reading levels. And we see test scores increase between thirty-six to one hundred and seventy-six percent as the children go through elementary school. So this is something that's actually critical, and I would fight for, and I think is a very important thing. Now, there's an equity issue here as well. In Miami Beach, for example, the city has just allocated money to increase the hours of VPK. I think that's great, but it should be a model for the rest of the county. It's a county-wide school board, and I will fight to make sure that our early education, our head start, our VPK, is spread across the district in a fair way so that every student has an equal chance for the benefits.
Thank you. Candidate Zapata.
So to me, early learning is critically important. My background originally, my first degree is in early childhood education, elementary, and I've served on the Board of Early Learning Coalition, have had exposure to so many of our early learning sites in the county. School readiness for children depends on that early learning. And when a child starts school not ready, it carries on for more than one grade level. So it's like we're doing a real disservice if we don't focus on having the accessibility, having families be have that accessibility to early care. A lot of times, we don't have enough spaces for them in the VPK. I think that Miami-Dade County Public Schools can do even better in terms of those early centers and really recognize the role that those teachers, the valuable role that those teachers play. Those kids are very susceptible in terms of, you know, their own self-perception. And that's when they they experience success at the beginning, they carry that. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate.
Thank you. So this is extremely important for me as well. My son is actually in VPK right now. And I think touching on the fact that, yes, we need to provide resources and expand the program to be available in more of our schools, but also provide community information and information about the resources available. In my case, in our district, we have a lot of people coming from other countries that may not have all this information available to them and don't understand the resources that are available, or they don't have the information to be able to apply for programs or understand where to go for the programs. So in this case, it's not just about expanding the program, which we absolutely know it needs to be done, and we know the benefits of it, but it's also informing the 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 community about the resources available and allowing them to be well-informed for the success of their children as they go on to different grades.
Thank you. Eileen. Yes. State and local revenues available for the 2021-2022 school year are likely to be drastically reduced. What would be your top funding priorities and what would you cut? Candidate Zapata.
I think the top funding priority has to be the support of teachers in the classroom and that they have the resources that they need and the ability, the autonomy to do what they as professionals know how to do in the classroom. Because if on top of the fact that there are there are cuts and there are things that are not going to be there that that we do need to at least have the teachers be able to do what they prepared professionally to do with our students, and of course, with parent input as well.
Candidate Fraga.
For me, I think right now, dealing with what we've been dealt with with COVID, I think would be the mental health. I think it would be extremely, I think it would be certainly negligent of us to cut mental health training and programs and counseling for students, and even starting with the smaller students who are creating social anxieties because they haven't been in classrooms, because they haven't been going out. Had this conversation with a teenager not too long ago who felt like they couldn't even get dressed anymore and go into a room with a lot of people. They felt isolated. So I think cutting the that section, that sector would be very, very difficult right now. And I think we'd be doing a huge disservice to our community in doing so. And where we would cut, I think that's very difficult. I don't want to see programs cut as far as that we usually see cut very quickly, which is arts and culture and extracurriculars that are also very important for development and social engagement within our community. So I think we would need to take a very heavy look at at the administration administrative costs that that are going on.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Candidate Moss.
I believe that we are going to get through, and I know we're going to get through this pandemic. And, you know, we're not going to ever go back to probably a normal school experience, but we're going to be going back to a new normal. And I believe that we still have to focus on as a priority, school safety. After Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, I believe, you know, that we have got to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball and that we continue to have those safety measures and that we have in place now and to continue to expand those safety measures going forward. Because again, you know, once we get back to the new normal, those concerns are still going to be out there. So my top priority would be making sure that we don't take our eye off the ball as relates to school safety.
Candidate Santos.
Yeah, as I've mentioned, I think that budgets are moral statements, value statements, and those that is especially true when we face budget crises, as we know we are going to be facing soon. So for me, the priorities will always be to invest in preventative measures that get ahead of the many issues that we then see grow after we don't get ahead of them. So supporting, of course, all teaching and learning that takes place in classrooms is priority. Prioritizing issues of equity, including food insecurity, which thank UPTA for providing those incredible grants, which I helped a school apply to. Ensuring that we close the digital divide and are focused on equity as the number-one priority in our funding sources. And focusing on those equity measures also means rethinking what what safety means in this socially-distanced world. And and for me, punitive measures may be where there is room to cut and taking a hard look at administrative costs.
Candidate Bayaz Geller, please.
Do you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. State and local revenues available for the 2021 and 2022 school year are likely to be drastically reduced. What would be your top funding priorities and what would you cut?
Okay, so yes, as we've mentioned, we absolutely want to make sure that we are building and reinforcing our relationship with federal and state legislators so that we can come up for any shortfalls. But whether we have the money or not, we need to make sure that safety, mental health, and education are our priorities. We have a lot of students with anxieties pre-COVID and post-COVID. We want to make sure we have enough counselors. Currently, we do not have, and many schools still don't even have, one counselor. We also want to make sure that we're still having our students college and career-ready, ready for success, that they are well-qualified to go out into the real world, and that at the same time, we are addressing their socio-emotional needs as they move forward in our schools.
Thank you. Candidate Rywell.
Thank you. In my experience running budgets and businesses, I know two things. You manage a budget from the top down using guiding principles, and then you squeeze a budget from the details at the bottom up. So here are my guiding principles that I've said since day one when this crisis started. C, safety, education, and equity. That's what matters right now. Are our classrooms safe? Are our kids safe? Are our teachers safe? Do our parents believe it? Are we doing things for the education of our students? We saw the debacle with the opening online. We need to make sure that those systems work and are audible and auditable, and we give the best education possible, and we have to do it across schools with equity. On the bottom side of the budget details, we need to look. Did anyone notice that in item E seventeen for the last board meeting, we put seventy-one million dollars into an unassigned fund for next year? I did. It's actually probably prudent, but that's what we have to do. We have to have guiding principles, and we have to manage the details, and I'll do that.
Thank you. Mindy.
You're muted.
Try that again. Thank you. Please give us an example of how you have worked with parents and/or students within the schools in your district. Candidate Moss will begin with you.
As I stated early on, back in nineteen eighty-six, when I recognized that students from challenged neighborhoods were basically being expelled from the school system, I created an alternative education school program for them to keep them away from the school to present pipeline. That meant, you know, having to hire teachers and administrators and all those kinds of things, you know, getting lunches from our remote, making sure bus transportation was there, making sure the parents weren't engaged, you know, in the process as well. Also, in two thousand and two, when I noted that students from challenged neighborhoods were being suspended at a disproportionate rate, I created a community suspension program for the area. And that program was a forerunner to the program that the district adopted in two thousand and fifteen that they called the Student Success Centers. And again, the idea there was to get them in, counsel academics, and try to go back to the schools and ask the schools to reduce their suspensions.
Thank you. Candidate Santos.
Thank you so much. I've had the honor of, as a PTA member, as I mentioned, working with schools in my district to help them apply for these grants. I have also been able to, through community and schools, attend report card conferences where I meet with students one-on-one and end up mentoring many of these students, some of who are undocumented, and I've been able to help navigate the college-going process, and some who have faced disproportionate punishments in our in our schools. I've been able to help as an advocate to make sure that certain schools that have had longer-than-usual waiting list for devices to be able to advocate for those schools to get the support they need. And I've served as principal today. That has been an incredible experience. And I have close relationships with many of our school leaders, where I've held meet and greets with most of the schools in my district to understand their concerns on the ground.
Thank you. Candidate Rywell.
Do you repeat the question, please?
I will. Please give us an example of how you have worked with parents and/or students within the schools in your district.
Candidate Rywell, you are on mute.
Can you hear me now? Great question. This is what the last two decades of my life have been about. I've started two speech and debate programs to try to help students find their voice and realize their dreams. And that involves motivating a whole group of parents to give up their weekends to judge these tournaments and to fundraise, and they did. It involves motivating students and teaching them that they can express themselves, get their voice out, and actually have success in tournaments. Students like Heaven Lee at the Miami Herald wrote a beautiful story about how she took a bus for two hours to school. She was one of my students. She wrote an original oratory about those struggles. And then you turn to the community and the parents you know, like I did with the Miami Beach Alumni Association as scholarship chair and president, and raise an award over a hundred fifty thousand dollars in college scholarships. You create the motivation of the parents and the students, and you give them the resources to realize their dreams.
Thank you. Candidate Bayaz Geller.
Yes, could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Please give us an example of how you have worked with parents and/or students within the schools in your district.
Okay, thank you. So I know parents are our greatest allies. So aside from working with them as being on the ESAC committee and attending multiple PTSAs, I've had the great pleasure of working with them to ensure that our students who are in the middle have been provided options to have access to advanced academics. And that's in mostly through building both the Avid program, starting in twenty-ten, and then in twenty-six, twenty-fifteen, bringing dual enrollment to our school. We started off with only two dual enrollment classes, and now we offer almost sixteen unique college courses at our school. And so I want to continue working with parents to expand these learning opportunities and to be a voice for all the students that deserve opportunities, all of them.
Thank you. Candidate Zapata.
So in my experience, and this is a really important question because I think that our school system is a very complex system for parents to navigate. And I have worked in both affluent schools and schools of higher need where parents didn't know the resources that were available to them. I've also prepared teachers in terms of how you work with parents to assist them in navigating that system. So reality is, I have had experience, you know, talking to parents and understanding what they don't know and being able to to share with them what resources are available for them. Because a lot of times, parents don't pursue engaging because they don't know what's available to them. And I think that it's part of a teacher's role. And I think that we need to do a better job of that through perhaps a parent academy in Miami-Dade County Public Schools or other initiatives like that. Parents are key to the education of their children.
Thank you. And candidate Fraga, please.
Thank you. I love this question. This is what I've been doing throughout my time in public service, is really working with parents and the community to bring them resources. I've been so fortunate to have such great parent involvement and parent groups within my community, that we've been able to foster great programs that have helped us bring these parent groups together and and benefit the schools as a community. So we did a lot of great programs. One of the ones that I did was what I spoke about at the beginning, which is our Parent Expo, where we bring educators, we bring people who have expertise on mental health, on nutrition, on college readiness, to be able to provide resources. So anyway, we bring hundreds of parents together, along with educators, to be able to do this. We also did a computer donation program to provide students with computers that needed it. with computers that needed it, ESOL students that needed the extra time. And our public school system didn't have them. And even some of our charter schools didn't have them. And so we partnered with these schools to be able to bring them computers. I have a mentorship program. I created an internship program in our community for these students. And we focus a lot on college readiness for students that are coming from other countries, as well as our FIU trolley, which provides public transportation. Thank you.
And thank you. Diane.
So our next question is, what are your plans and timelines for addressing the needs of English learners and exceptional students? And we'll begin with candidate Bayaz Geller.
Well, we absolutely want to make sure that we have an inclusive environment from students from all backgrounds. And so when elected, I want to make sure that student success of all of our community students, regardless of ability, race, or background, that they have the greatest access to success. Postgraduate, not just in school, but also post-graduation, that we have more certifications available for students, again, from all backgrounds, that can help them gain access to jobs in the future. I also want to make sure that our students have living wages, again, regardless of background or ability. And I want to make sure that we are very close to families and that we're addressing the needs and that we're creative in the way that we respond to their overall experiences.
Thank you. Candidate Riwell.
Thank you. This is a great question. The other day, when I was in my geometry class, which was 33 students, and that's another issue, I asked them, how many of you speak English as your first language at home? And only everybody but probably six students out of that class said that they spoke another language at home. And then I asked them, what languages do you speak? And there was six different languages that the students spoke at home. So this is a very challenging question, and we have to be creative about the solutions. I would often pair students together that spoke the same language and actually literally have one translate to the other the questions because math is universal. But we also have to make sure that those students have access to all the services, like gifted testing. You know, many of the students in my honors gifted are not any brighter than in just my regular gifted class, but they don't know the system. We have to not only teach them language, but we have to teach them how to navigate the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Fraga.
Repeat the question, please.
Sure. What are your plans and timelines for addressing the needs of English learners and exceptional students?
So in the area where I've been very heavily involved, this has obviously been a big issue because we had so many students that have come from other countries, particularly Latin America. And one of the issues that was identified right away was that, that there was students that were being left behind or were having, were struggling tremendously in their in their testing because they were not prepared or had the language barrier. So in this case, we went to the source of what the problem was, and the teachers told us, and the administrators told us, it was lack of computers to be able to provide more solutions and more time for these students to have on programs that were going to benefit them in getting caught up and having the proper resources available. So we provided computers as a community. We got together the parents and said, how can we help our students? And so we provided computers that were going to be prepared with the resources needed to be able to give these kids extra time to be able to get caught up with their peers. While this seems to be a very difficult very difficult solution, it was something that at least helped the children catch up.
Thank you. Candidate Zapata.
So I think that both students with exceptional needs and students that are English language learners both have needs in classrooms in terms of the teacher being able to provide the differentiated instruction that they need. Why? Because they are at different levels of understanding based on both of those populations. I've prepared a lot of teachers that are K-12 ESC teachers right now in our system, and I know too well the struggles that they face. Until we really look at that and provide that support in those classrooms and equip teachers with the resources and the skills and the assistance to be able to take a large classroom and provide the instruction that each student needs to bring them up to the level they need to be, then they'll constantly be left behind as they move up from one grade to another. It's something we need to seriously look at and something that I think the teachers, because they're looking at a pacing guide, and they have to be on a certain page and a certain content by a certain week, again, because of the testing, this sort of, you know, falls through the wayside.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Santos.
Thank you. Well, just start with our special needs students. Of course, we need to make sure that we're complying with all IDEA laws for students with IEPs. But what I've learned through many conversations is that this is becoming a lot more about compliance than actually serving the needs of the students. So for me, it is shifting that focus back to serving needs of students. And when we talk about equity, which is, as I have said, a huge priority of mine, looking at the number of students that we identify as gifted versus ESC and realizing that there are inequities, especially for our Black and Hispanic students labeled as ESC but not gifted. For our English language learner students, I learned English through our schools. We need to have native language testing to ensure that students are able to show their competency. We need to improve our bilingual education programs because that's a huge asset. And we need to support teachers who have students who speak different languages. In my district, some students are speaking MAM from Guatemala. These are dialects that teachers are not supported in teaching those students. Lastly, I'll say we need to disaggregate data by these subgroups as well so we are able to realize what gaps still exist.
Thank you. And candidate Moss.
Thank you for the question. I believe, again, that we need to make sure that after-school activities and reading opportunities and classes are available, you know, to those students. Also, I think that we need to utilize the strength of the fact that we have this virtual learning now so that maybe in the evenings, you can have both the students as well as their parents. They are working along with teachers in order to go on ahead and to get the additional skills and the additional assistance that they basically need. Those are the kinds of things that I think that we need to do in order to make sure that we can help these students be the very best that they can be.
Thank you. Eileen.
What is your 10-year vision for public education in Miami-Dade County? Candidate Moss, please.
My 10-year vision is to protect our traditional schools. I see that that is going to be a problem down the road because, again, what is happening is that you have resources that are being drained off to charters, to private schools, and to religious institutions. And we need to make sure that we're in a position to provide the very best public education that we can, which means that we need to protect the resources that are going to our public schools. Again, I also believe that we need to make sure that we can bring the community more into the schools, particularly in challenged neighborhoods, to try to get the churches, to try to get nonprofit organizations, and those kinds of groups involved in order to help students who basically are having, you know, some struggles and some difficulties. But again, I think the biggest challenge is going to be to be able to hold on to the resources that the traditional public school needs in order to go on ahead and provide, continue to provide quality education.
Thank you. Candidate Santos, please.
Thank you. I'm so glad you asked this question because I wish it was asked more in forums. My vision in 10 years for our public school system is an equitable system that closes achievement gaps, shuts the school-to-prison pipeline down, pours into our students' social-emotional learning, where we have excellent schools in every corner of this district, where we prepare students to thrive in career and college with those skills they need to be ready for an ever-evolving world because the jobs our kindergartners are going to do don't exist today. And it is a rapidly evolving system that meets the needs of every family in every corner of this district.
Thank you. Candidate Zapata.
Yeah, can you repeat the question? I'm having an issue with the laptop, and it might go off any minute.
Okay. No problem. What is your 10-year vision for public education in Miami-Dade County?
Really, you know, overarching 10-year, my dream would be to achieve more equitable education in our county. I think that from school to school, there are children who do not, are in classrooms that are very different from children in other parts of our county. And it breaks my heart because I think that they all deserve the same opportunity. We are public education. We are all supposed to be providing the preparation for all of them. And I don't think that we do as well a job. And I don't know what the answer exactly to that would be in terms of step-by-step and how to get there, but that's critically important to me.
Candidate Fraga.
Thank you. Such a wonderful question. And it's really sometimes difficult to look out 10 years and say we have an exact plan. But definitely for me, it would be equity, innovation, and excellence for all of our students and really protecting the resources that we provide our students within our public schools. For me, innovation is extremely important. Like it's been said, the jobs that are being done today are probably not the jobs that are going to be done by many of our students as they go into their work and their careers and they graduate. So I think it's extremely important that we shift the way we are teaching, that we really focus on having well-rounded students emotionally and mentally, and that we prepare them with real-life skills that are going to make them ready to face a world economy.
Thank you. Candidate Bayaz Geller.
Question, please?
I'm sorry. You want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
What is your 10-year vision for public education in Miami-Dade County?
Thank you. So I have to say, I'm ready to hit the ground running. And so what I think we really need to do is ensure that our students feel safe in our schools, and that means that they believe that the system is there to help them, but also that we're addressing a lot of the crises that our students are having at home and in their personal lives. And so a system that is holistic, that teaches the whole child inside and out, and that responds quickly to their needs. Also, a system that is fair and equitable to students and also to teachers that we're reviewing our institutional practices so that teachers can teach and students can get the best education. And a system in which we all learn from each other, we're mutually informed, the parents and the teachers and the schools. We're all working together, and our priority should be to face all the challenges and that we're equipped to do that in the future.
Thank you. Candidate Riwell.
Thank you. I think in 10-year increments in my life, 10 years ago, my vision was to go to Miami Beach Senior High School, revolve the speech, revive the speech and debate program that I loved and helped me so much, involve parents and students, and teach them the skills they needed to succeed. That vision, I feel confident in. And in the next 10 years, I want to bring that to the entire school district. And that's what I want, a Miami Miracle Part Two. I want to teach students to have the skills they need to succeed, whether that's vocational skills or whether that's college skills. But there is not a future for unskilled labor. We've seen that. And we have to do a job that makes our students succeed. You know, a child born in poverty has an 80% chance of escaping it with a college education. Why don't we join together and use all the resources at our disposal to make that a reality in 10 years? Join me in doing that.
Thank you. You can all take a little deep breath. That will conclude our questions. And we will now move to closing statements from each candidate. We began our questions with District Three and our opening with District Three. So let's begin closing statements with District Nine. Candidate Moss, you have 1 minute and 30 seconds for your closing statement.
Once again, thank you very much for this opportunity to address the PTA, PTSA. Again, I am County Commissioner Dennis C. Moss, a 27-year veteran of the County Commission. Again, a proud graduate of the Miami-Dade County Public School System and as an experienced elected official. You know, I helped rebuild South Dade after Hurricane Andrew. During these challenging times of COVID and the other things that we're facing, I believe the experience and leadership is important. Again, I know most of the individuals, you know, on the school board quite well. I can work well, you know, with them. I know that I can help them get through the issues that the school system is experiencing at this particular point in time. I've got experience in having opened up an alternative education program, having to hire teachers, having to basically deal with curriculums and all of those kinds of things. I also provided a community suspension program prior to or before the school district adopted its Student Success Centers. So I've got experience on both sides, both the elected official side of it as well as the practical side in terms of having services out there in the community to address and to deal with students who are in need. And so with that, I'm asking for the support of the community. Again, I want to encourage everybody to get out and vote. And if you're going to vote, you vote for Commissioner Dennis C. Moss. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Santos, you have 1 minute and 30 seconds for your closing.
Thank you so much for this opportunity and for the wonderful conversation tonight. As I mentioned, I am running to be that next-generation leader for our communities. It is time that we value and pay our teachers what they are worth as the professionals that they are. It is time that we bring 21st century solutions to the 21st century challenges that we are facing today and that we view and treat parents as the true partners that they are in our student's education because, as you know, they're the child's first teacher. My life story has prepared me for this moment, from being an undocumented student in our schools to serving in, having experience in classrooms outside of after-school programs, serving in the Obama administration. I have seen the inequities that can exist under one system, and I am ready to fight alongside you, PTA, PTSA groups, parents, advocates, students, teachers, to make sure that we build the Miami-Dade County Public Schools of tomorrow and the Miami-Dade County Public Schools of our dreams. And if you want to join me in that vision, you can visit my website, Luisasantos.com. Join us for an event. And you can always reach me on my cell phone, 786-584-7220, because I want to hear directly from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Zapata, you have 1 minute and 30 seconds for your closing.
So I thank you, thank you again for this opportunity. Very interesting questions, provoking. I appreciate that. I just want to say that, for me, this is a continuation of what I've dedicated 30 years of my life to, experience in the classroom, experience preparing teachers, experience teaching at the college level. It's something that I would be, that's school board member, that understands what's being presented, that items, speaking about things happening in the district or things that I probably have experienced. I know firsthand the role of a teacher. I've had administrative positions in the school district as well. I think experience really matters right now, especially with, you know, what our school system, the situation that it's in right now. Someone without experience who would have to start learning a lot of the workings of the school system would be detrimental. Again, it's my career, my passion, and it would be an absolute honor to be able to serve, to continue serving in the capacity of a school board member for District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Fraga, you have 1 minute, 30 seconds for your closing statement.
Okay. Thank you. So thank you for hosting this tonight. I think it's extremely important to have our parents involved. And that's one of the reasons I'm running. My child is currently in school. I think it's extremely important that our parents are involved and that we give them the opportunity to have a voice. As a leader in my community and an elected official for the past seven years, I understand the needs in our communities, not only from the perspective of our parents and our students and our teachers, but also as a leader in the community, knowing what the issues are and how to deal with them. If elected as a member of the Miami-Dade County School and how to deal with them. If elected as a member of the Miami-Dade County School Board in District 5, I will ask the deep questions, the hard questions about policy, about our budgeting, about programs in our community, and I will be that voice for our parents and for our children. Education is extremely important to me, and I think that we have a great school system that we can only continue to improve. In our community, we value top-notch education, and we are able to provide that education. I'm committed to continuing to improve this school system and working with our educators and our leaders in the community, our board members, and our parents to continue to only excel and take our school system to the next level. If elected, it would be an honor to serve our community, and I look forward to continuing to provide exceptional leadership in our community. I'm always available, and I ask those who are listening from District 5 to go to my website, www.christyfraga.com, to hear more about the programs, to hear more about programs that I'd love to offer. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Candidate Bayaz Geller, you have a minute, 30 seconds for your closing statement.
Yeah, I really want to thank the PTA, PTSA Council for this opportunity. It's great to be here and to have, to hear from all the candidates and their platforms. It's been really exciting. And as your next school board member, I will be representing all of you, and I will be a voice for you and for your story, as I have been for thousands of students, parents, and families in my community. I will be asking the tough questions, and I will be fighting for our education curriculum, school safety, mental health resources, and our budget and finances. I'm very honored and proud to have been endorsed by our teachers, by elected officials such as Congresswoman Donna Shalala, Senator Annette Tadeo, Senator Jose Javier Rodriguez, and 25 other elected officials in our community and countless leaders. But I can't do it alone. My greatest endorsement is you, all of you watching, all of you parents. I need all of you who believe in our public schools to come with me on this journey. For more information, you can visit luciabayazgeller.com. You can visit all my social media, @electluciabayazgeller. And mostly, what I want you to do is send me a message. I want to know you. I want to know more about you. If you can volunteer your time, would be great. But mostly, just spread the word and make sure all your friends know that you will be electing a public school teacher who has been a fighter for public schools this November 3, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Rywell, you will have a minute, 30 seconds for your closing statement.
Thank you. I hope you've enjoyed this forum. I have. I've tried to give you the most detailed and straightforward answers that I can. And that's the way I am, and that's the way I'll always be. You'll know where I stand. You'll have a plan for where I'm going. And even if it's not politically positive, I will tell you how I feel, because that's leadership that I believe in. I have a unique skill set. I have a business background. I have a teaching background. We are in a crisis situation, and we need that on the board so we can ensure student success for everyone. That is why the organizations that do detailed interviews, like the Herald, the United Teachers of Dade, the labor unions, have endorsed me. That is why the community leaders, the mayors that work most closely with the school system, Mayor Dan Gilbert of Miami Beach, Mayor Enid Weissman of Aventura, Mayor Tony Di Filippo of North Miami, Mayor Stephanie Bruder of Bay Harbor, I could go on. They trust me. But most importantly, it's you. You are the people that know me best. So find someone within your PTA organization from Miami Beach who has worked with me, who has worked with you. Ask them what they think of Russ Rywell and what he does for our kids, and I will stand by their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy?
Thank you. And thank you candidates for a very informative evening. For our viewers, tonight's webinar was planned for you to decide who you feel will best serve as a member of Miami-Dade County's Public School Board. We want to emphasize that it is vitally important that you commit to voting in this upcoming general election.
And we also ask that you commit, if you have not already done so, to responding to the 2020 census. You heard the candidates tonight. They have wonderful ideas, but these ideas take money. And the census will portion federal funds for our schools and other services for the next 10 years. So it's incredibly important that we get the response rate up, as Miami-Dade County's response rate right now is hovering just over 60%. So if you've not already done so, please commit tonight to responding to the census. You can do so online at my2020census.gov. And once you do so, ask your friends if they've responded to the census.
Thank you, Diane. Tonight's webinar is one of many advocacy events that we have planned throughout the year by Miami-Dade County Council PTA's Legislative Commission. Please continue to follow us at mdccpta.net, and thank you all, and have a great evening. Good night. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. You're safe.
So much.
Bye.